And those requirements provided for the Open Public Meetings Act haven't satisfied. Notes said this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Independent, and the True Freedom Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Minnesota Building, and filing with the Township Department on January 7th of 2023. Committee Member Clark.
Here.
Committee Member Pratt. Committee Member Settebrynow. Committee Member Higgin. Committee Member Perry.
Here. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the British states, I am in your God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you so much.
I love it.
At this time I'd like to have.
I've got to stand there one day.
From the moment of silence, one of the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and never. Thank you. For first item on tonight's agenda, we have a life-saving valor award presentation recognizing Middletown resident Gianna Santilli. Please come forward to the front of the room, and I'd also like to invite Middletown Fire Department Chiefs John Walsh Jr., Daniel Kelly, and Kevin Morrissey, and Jeff Spangler from Middletown Fire Prevention. Join Mayor Perry in front of them.
Bringing out the fan club, I love it. Right? Committee Member Higgin. Well, good evening, everybody. That's our old deal. Happy President's Day weekend for everybody. But we're here on a Tuesday, and it always feels weird doing these meetings on Tuesdays, but they're meant to be on Mondays or something. But we're here today for a very special reason, and that is to celebrate the swift thinking of some incredible and very young Middletown residents. And in a time when unfortunately, and the chiefs know, Jeff knows, in a time when we've seen far too many fires happening out there, and sadly, fortunately, we're knock on wood, right? Right, Chief? Knock on that wood there. Good job. Not yet, not in Middletown, but in our region, we've seen some unfortunate losses. But thanks to the swift thinking of some of our youngest residents, thanks to the preparation that our fire department, that our fire prevention provides our young people, we're standing here today being able to give a life-saving award rather than mourn on what could have been a true tragedy. So before I go any further, because you know me, I'll go on for a little bit, I'll invite Chief Walton and Jeff, I'll let you speak. Chief, you want to say anything first?
Wasn't prepared for this, but.
That's why I did it. Thank you, appreciate it.
You, John Walton, Middletown Township Fire Department, want to commend you on your act of bravery and everything you did to save that person, save your family, and hopefully get home safe. Big learnings to fire department for us to come there, save that house, save your house, save everybody else's house around there. It's got nasty night from the wind, low temperatures, but great job, hope to do work. You're 18, you're more than welcome to join the fire department.
Jeff, can you say anything?
Go ahead. Just wanted to say on behalf of the man on the Middletown Fire Prevention Bureau, that your actions that night did save your family, and it's a true testament to the fire prevention program that we have here in town. Smoke detectors save lives, and quick thinking and quick actions that you did save lives as well. Just want to say congratulations.
So, you know, I was saying, when we were talking about this and bringing Gianna and her family into a TC meeting, we were talking about what ways, what was the reason, what made you jump to the way you did? And I think about Middletown then, and I thought about it because my daughter, who is, you know, was two, I guess at the time, just turned two, wanted to go through the smoke room, and I was like, no, no, no. And now, granted, two's a little young, but thinking about what you and what every other student goes through and should go through, more than once, more than once. You know, sadly, I was, happily, I was with Will Montanaro a few weeks ago for lunch, who lost his wife and his daughter in a fire in Hazlit. And he was still wearing it on his face, as I would be. But now, today, when I came down here, I thought, what a great thing. But when I look out at the people here supporting you there tonight, Gianna, I think of what could have been. And I can't help but think about the emotion that you were going through, the emotion that your entire family was going through, but the amazing gratitude that they must have today and every day for your swift thinking and your understanding as to what to do in the event of an emergency. Because I know that there are people up in this room who may not have had the same swift thinking that you had, and we're all much older than you. And I like to get to say that, because I don't think I say it that often. But Gianna, tonight, the Middletown Township Committee is hereby bestowing this life-saving valor award to you in recognition of rescuing your mom from your burning home, and once you heard the smoke alarms, you immediately followed your instincts. You woke her up, and your swift and calm response during this emergency is admirable and absolutely heroic. We are proud that you're a member of our community, and as the chief said, as Chief Walton said, tonight, I think we're approving three firefighter applications, and I expect to see yours right up there one day for the heroism that you displayed. So congratulations, and most importantly, thank you. Right here, and take a quick time, right, Raven?
Yes.
Yeah, come, skim right next to us.
One, two, three. Beautiful. Thank you.
I didn't tell the leader.
Somebody.
Go.
Next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes for December 19, 2022, regular meeting, January 1st, 2023, reorganization meeting, January 17, 2023, regular meeting, and February 6, 2023, workshop meeting.
Both no proof. Yeah.
Committee Member Clark.
Yes.
Committee Member Perry.
Yes.
She carries to approve minutes. Agenda, which would include resolutions 23-84 through 23-91, and approval of firefighter applications.
Motion to approve. Second.
Committee Member Clark.
Yes.
Committee Member Pratt.
Yes.
Committee Member Perry.
Yes.
She carries to approve consent agenda. Our last item on the agenda tonight, we have the county committee acting as the ABC issuing authority, 23-82, resolution overriding person-to-person, page-based transfer, federal retail consumption license, number 341-33-018-006.
Motion to approve. Second.
Committee Member Clark.
Yes.
Committee Member Pratt.
Yes.
Committee Member Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt 23-92. Any other township committee comments?
You know, Heidi, I don't expect to be called on that quickly during these. All right, Committee Member Clark.
I just want to congratulate Gianna again on a great job, and just expand a little bit upon what the Fire Marshal was talking about. We've been working on a program through the township and the fire department for approximately 25 years, bringing awareness to not just, not just what the fire department is, but what families should do in the event of an emergency, pre-planning, as Mayor Perry mentioned, the smoke trailer, which allows kids to be in a safe environment, but kind of scary at the same time, and gives them some experience in those terrible situations. And it truly is amazing, whether it saved one person or a thousand people, it's amazing to see the difference in one opportunity. And anytime that we get the chance to do this, it truly is awesome. So congratulations to not just the fire, not just Gianna, but to the fire department and Fire Marshal's office for doing a great job of promoting safety in the home and in the community. That's all I got for right now.
Thank you, Clark. Committee Member Pratt.
I will echo the same sentiments as Committee Member Clark for sure, and y'all have a happy ending, and blessed to have this one. So wonderful to see Gianna and her family tonight, and know that they're okay. And thanks to our Middletown firefighters and their diligence in responding to our fire, but also in educating and helping our young people know exactly what to do in the event of an emergency. So very thankful tonight and grateful that, you know, this family's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Committee Member Pratt. The only thing I just want to mention and update for the public is that the township has filed its complaint against, with the council on local mandates. So thank you to our attorney, Brian Nelson, who spearheaded that and getting that filed to ensure that the $325,000-plus thousand that was spent on adding police officers and extra patrols in order to combat the ongoing auto theft issue that we're seeing, it's going to be reflected in the budget. Colleen's got to pay for that. We had to pay for those police. But we're going to continue to fight this epidemic that is plaguing municipalities up and down New Jersey. And I think we're going to win this complaint, and I think we're going to prove to the state of New Jersey that it's time for municipalities to stand up, to stand together. We're 565 municipalities. We need to stop Trenton from passing these unfunded mandates that continually punish taxpayers. If Trenton wants to implement these rules and these laws, then they can start billing the people of our municipalities for it, but they are not going to lay the blame on Middletown Township or the people who are responsible and who promise each and every year to pass a fiscally responsible budget, it's not going to be on us. So Brian, thank you to our entire team, thank you to our police, thank you. All right, with that, I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment, may do so. We ask that you come right up to the front, John, move that mic up. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment, we just ask that you state your name and address for the record, that you keep your comments to five minutes or four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. With that being said, any member of the, I'm sitting in Hyde's seat too, I just realized that. I can see that the logo was off-center. I thought Nelson had something against me, like he was the next. Any member, Melanie, come on down. I'm closer to the camera, farther from Nelson, I don't know what's going on. That's the most speaking that's ever come out of this chair. I just want to, I just want to be clear. Go ahead, Melanie.
Melanie Elmer, Green Tree Terrace, Sutherland Croft. Two quick questions. First, I guess this is for Henley. Why does some garbage get picked up at 4:30 in the morning?
Shouldn't actually, no.
Forever it has. I mean, recycling days are worse than the garbage days, because you hear all the broken glass and everything. I'm thinking, like during COVID, they were doing it because they were like understaffed, and they said overlook and get people, and we're doing double shifts, and they were maybe carrying over and, you know, working out early to get all the routes in, but then it makes me think, well, now, they have the more routes they can do, and there's a lot of hours. It's better for them.
It should never be 4:30.
4:30, all the time.
It's pretty good.
Green Tree. Yeah.
I'll trip right off of 5:20.
So I think we're one of the first routes, but I think they start in our neighborhood, Yale, they probably come up Swimming River, I guess.
I do, yeah, that's probably.
President, that's where I remember Roadwalk.
Yeah. Because we've had complaints about it in the past, and we've made them stop, and they've stopped, so.
Right, I mean, for years they were, but now it's been consistently, even in the summer and the winter is worse, because there's no trees to block the noise. It's just, but almost, it's every day, it's recycling days plus the garbage days, usually 4:30 in the morning.
We'll communicate that back to the hall.
That'll be great.
To the hall, but Solterra is still our caller. We'll communicate that back to them.
My second question is, do we have no mayor's office hours that you can book online now, or is that still in effect?
I just have my office hours. Oh, person, when was it? Yeah, last Wednesday I did those. Well, so I do them once a month in between the first and second meeting.
Okay. So it gets posted on the mayor's page?
Slash slash office hours, Middletown and Jada Vokes.
Okay, so then next, so in March. So if we wanted to have a special meeting, I could just call the office?
Yeah, just text me.
Thank you.
Mail it over the weekend, I'm not afraid to get back there.
Thank you.
Yeah, most likely the 15th, Melanie, is. Okay. A woman. Oh, you have to come up, just for the recording purposes, come up. And anybody that's watching you online, not that anybody.
There's millions.
Yes. No pressure. Just tell me your name and address.
I'm running, actually, but my boyfriend's in Middletown, so.
Okay.
I'm here, and I was.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. I love Middletown, it's great. So.
Come down here and register to vote.
Right. So I'm here, I'm a psych major, so I basically have to go to a municipal town meeting and just see how it goes. My first one is my first one, so I have to see how it goes, and I.
Mine too.
Right? So my one question, we're going to have a few more, I don't know if I should wait till after, it's just like, I don't want to take up too much of your time. May I ask who's presiding?
Mayor Perry.
Okay, so it's like my second question. If I have.
This is way easier than my poli psych classes. I just want to say that for the record. What was your other questions?
I mean, I have like, I have like 10.
Okay.
So we haven't really thought, I was like, the indecrety of the whole meeting, because you want to talk about, I believe it was approval of minutes, consent agenda, and ABC issuing.
Yes.
Is that correct? Those are the three items you're going to discuss.
We already approved them.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
If you want to make an appointment, come in one day or talk on the phone, you can.
I might have messed up that.
So, so just briefly, the, all the minutes from previous meetings are all listed in our agenda, right, which is available for the public, and then that's the way that the public is able to look at what we are doing after we've taken certain actions, and Heidi is the true expert, but after we've taken certain actions on things, it's then reported in the minutes, so that the public has a separate right to know exactly what was discussed, how it was discussed, who spoke on certain issues, what was the opinions of those individuals, all those different things. So that's what the minutes encompass. Then when we approve the minutes for this meeting, your comments will be in those minutes, all right? So be on the lookout for those minutes, if you need casual reading.
Or proof that you were here.
Yeah.
I'm not used to the layout yet, because this is my first meeting, so it's.
So then the consent agenda has to do with certain housing things that we, partnerships that we just formalized. It, the, those resolutions are created to demonstrate to the entire, to the public of Middletown and to the public at large, what we're endorsing, what we're discussing, and why we're doing those certain things. So, for instance, today, we passed a resolution partnering with Community Options, which provides assistance to individuals with developmental disabilities. So there's all these different things that are occurring, and those happen in the consent agenda. We didn't have any introductions of any ordinances, which require an introduction of an ordinance, and then a certain amount of time has to go by, and then you have to have a public hearing and approval.
That's the whole, is it an ordering, is it an order?
Yes, person for a resolution. Yeah, sometimes it's good one way, and sometimes it's good the other way.
Yeah, I think that's about, thank you for explaining it. It's about, how long do these usually?
That's funny, it was debated earlier, how long was this going to last? I've been to meetings that go till 2 o'clock in the morning, I've been to meetings that have lasted eight minutes.
I guess it's good you're not in Ohio. East Palestine.
Uh, yeah, I'm very fortunate to be the mayor of East Palestine, yeah.
I know that you guys are, I know that's, a lot of people are worrying, sort of, are you worried about what's happening in East Palestine, or you don't think that really affects?
So I think what it's, do I think it's worrisome? I think that you have a lack of, there's a lack of leadership when it comes to what's happening in East Palestine. I don't pretend to be an expert in the issue, but you, there is a reason why you're seeing such discontent and such. If I have a two-year-old and a one-year-old, and if I had those two kids living anywhere near the vicinity of what was going on, I'd have a big problem. But when you have a lack of leadership at the Department of Transportation, when you have a lack of leadership in the executive offices, when you have nobody directing which way the ship should be pointed, bringing in resources, where is FEMA? Where is the American Red Cross? Where is all HUD providing temporary shelter for individuals that are now being displaced because a poisonous gas is burning off, and to the point where they're polluting all the waterways in and around that area that your children are now going to bathe in, drink, and be eating the plants that are feeding off of that water? Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I often talk, Dave, sir, and.
It's very alarming what's happening to towns of, I don't know, where it's still into the environment and to the waterways, and it's burning off in the air, I think it would be.
And how about the, and how about the fact that a declaration, an emergency declaration was rejected?
By the.
By the president.
Oh.
By the president. So with no rationale as to why.
I think it was the governor who denied.
The governor has to request it.
Oh, okay.
By law, a governor has to request an emergency declaration, same thing that happened in the superstorm Sandy, and storms that happen, quite frankly, every single year, we have to. But, yeah, I have, I have a, well, I might not be in the East Palestine Town Hall right about now, but I'd be calling on somebody.
It's very, it's a very hard, I think the decisions themselves were not good to choose from, and I'm sure you all know like what, how it transpired and the whole thing. So I was just wondering if you guys ever talked about that, or how it would possibly affect, right, you're not that far from Ohio, you know, it's not, you know, it's not Pennsylvania, I mean, it's the.
Well, we're not sitting all that far from where the World Trade Center collapsed, and people that lived in this town, that volunteered for this town, died because of the fumes, have had cancer because of the toxins that they inhaled. So Middletown's well aware, you know, we lost more people in 9/11 than any municipality outside of New York City, so.
Dad.
What's your last name?
Maras.
Well, it, when you, when you, Middletown's well aware of those types of emergencies that happen, you know, much of our town didn't have electricity for 14 days, it's very difficult to refrigerate your insulin for 14 days without electricity. So the way it impacts people is difficult, and you need to lead from minute one, rather than come in and try and pick up pieces afterwards. So the impact that 9/11, the smoke, the dust that engulfed the entire city, there was members of this governing body who were a part of that, not me, hosing people down at the ferry terminals to get the dust off of them. So we've had our fair share of tragedies, but if I was in Ohio, I'd be pretty irritated.
I think that's, that's very true, I think they handled it in a way they best saw it. The, to the, I think it was the mayor's credit, he did tell people to evacuate from that zone, where if you're, you need to leave because it's not safe. I agree with that, that was a good call, it's not like he said, everyone stay and, you know, have a party, that's not what happened. So I think he did a very good job, but it is worrying, I don't know if I should care what's happening in Ohio, because I'm in New Jersey, and.
You should always care, regardless of how close or far they are, they're still human beings, they're still fellow Americans, so we should always care. Whether you should be concerned about your health, I'm not an expert in that, so I don't want to comment on that, but you should always care.
Sorry, that was a huge tangent.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I tend to go on them too.
Yeah, okay.
Brian hasn't poked me under the tibia, so I'm pretty good.
All right. So if I go sit down now, will you got, is it, is it over?
We'll go on to the next.
Okay. Awesome, thank you so much, Mary.
You're welcome. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yeah, Bruce, go on down. Now, Bruce is going to ask me what I think of the peace process in Israel and Palestine thing. All right, good.
Bruce Stafford, 39 brain art, Warhamas. For starters, Tony, I was just wondering, Solterra still picking up our garbage? Because they were voted out by IWS.
Well, that, that, that.
Some techs are changing, technically, yes, IWS is our vendor.
Interstate.
I think when we awarded the contract, we awarded the IWS. It was, okay. I'm just so used to seeing big, giant, bold letters of Solterra on the side.
They took the letters off the trucks.
I saw them, they've repainted them a nice, a nice green.
You still see the old letters now.
Oh, you can stop and say again.
It's not the one.
Most of them now have the IWS on the doors now, except for them with the small, you know.
Yeah, I did notice that, though there was a truck that was broken down over on New Mammoth Road, and there was quickly a swift-moving pickup truck with IWS written right across it, I was just going to do a sest.
It was a new-looking pickup truck.
Oh, it was new.
And brand new.
Sure.
A lot of those Solterra trucks are in bad shape anyway. They're, they're hurting.
Well, listen, I'm sure the trash trucks get beat up quite, quite a bit, they're not like, you're an ice truck that is going to last a little bit. But. I think on garbage, never a clean business.
If this helps Ted at all, the last contract we have with a garbage company, it was very easy to take care of the woman's problem back here, because in the body of the contract, it specifically states what time the trucks are allowed in the township.
It does in the new contract, isn't it?
Center of work.
Yeah. So that's an easy fix, because there was a problem a while back ago with somebody that was complaining about the garbage truck coming into the town too early. That garbage truck didn't even pick up garbage at that house. Middletown's big. Yep, it's an easy fix. Okay. Ted, based on our discussion on January 17th, did you have any luck with obtaining information from the manufacturer on that?
About, talking about the gate opening and closing?
Yeah, because the float carts that I booked at, it definitely appears I was correct when I came down there on the 22nd, because the water levels were the same on both sides of the valve.
That's right, yeah, that.
Which, which means the valve was open.
Right.
And it shouldn't have been closed.
It should have been, right?
Yes.
That's why they went down, they tried to reset it, and it worked out to that.
Right. My next question is, when you said you put a work order in through Valor, did that work order mean that Public Works was going to respond to that?
did that work order mean that Public Works was going to respond to that?
Public Works would, yes. Not, not the manufacturer.
Because that's one of my main concerns. Once again, I shouldn't be the guy going out there that determined there's a problem with that valve. You have the app on your phone that, which tells you if there's a problem with the valve. And my main concern is if Public Works goes out there and they don't have any luck fixing that valve, we have a maintenance contract on it, we're going to have another high tide in less than 12 hours.
We do, and it, there hasn't been really a time that Public Works hasn't been able to get the gate open or close magically. We have to. That really isn't a problem.
Well, you see, my main concern with that too is if they open it because it was closed, is somebody going to go back out there at two o'clock in the morning when there's a high tide coming in?
I'm surprised you haven't seen me. I've been out there.
No, I've, I see you. I run into you all the time. You know that.
I know.
I see you.
A lot of attention is spent, has been spent on that valve over the years and still is. And if something goes wrong, we make sure, do our best to make sure that it opens, closes, when it's supposed to. And that, then you're not the only one. You noticed it this time, but you're not the only one that notices it. We do get email, uh, warnings every time it's a certain height water level in that, in that valve. Restored back to normal. We get, we get emails on, I get an email every time. But that happens fairly often. It doesn't always mean there's a problem. It means it shows us what the levels are and we can check on it probably.
Yeah, but you know as well as I do that if the tide's coming in and if your indication is that the water's the same level on both sides of the valve, that's not working.
No, unless we want it open, like we want it open on the 22nd to let the water back out. That's a different story.
Today's a perfect example. And I don't personally know at this point in time if it's open or closed, but the slide gates are closed at the marina. I know that.
Right.
That's important.
They closed them this afternoon. They just, just told us that a few, maybe an hour or so.
Right. But I know they're flooded.
Just check it out.
And that's good too. As long as they close the slide gates at mean low tide. They don't close them until that tide's coming in, that valve's not helping us being open because we're going to get flooded. They can cheat music, right?
Yeah, we know. I think, yeah, I think, I know that you know this for sure.
Okay.
And the, and the DP knows and it, and Dan Lockright's over there.
DP has been outstanding. They've been outstanding. They're on top of that, those slide gates, like you read about. Believe me when I tell you.
I've never heard that statement. Break this thing down.
But, uh, I'm saying, you know, what we were just talking about, if Public Works has a problem, because if I report a problem, you have less than 12 hours to fix it.
Correct. Yep.
We have a maintenance contract on the valve then, right? So if it's not fixed by Public Works, somebody's going to report there.
We have a, we have a contract with PCS.
Okay. That's fine with me because if there's a problem with Public Works, like I said, in less than 12 hours, there's another tide coming in.
And you know we can close it manually.
I know, but we've had issues when I go out there at four o'clock in the morning when the valve's supposed to be closed and it's open. Somebody get out there at four o'clock in the morning, it's supposed to be closed and it's open.
Yeah, but most, most times it.
No, not close. It needs to be all.
Well, yeah.
Because if I'm getting two feet of water at my house because somebody's sleeping in bed at four o'clock in the morning and a high tide's coming in, high tide, you know as well as I do, doesn't come in the same time every day. It rotates about an hour every single day, every day that goes by. And we've discussed this before and we had problems before with it, with guys from Public Works that were supposed to be out there at two o'clock in the morning and they stayed in bed. I met up with them at eight o'clock the following morning and they said, oh, it's like it's not a big problem for them because they live on the dry side. But we got people that need to get out of their house to get to work or to take somebody to the hospital. He can't get out. No, he'd remember because the one guy retired from your crew of Public Works. The guy with the pickup truck that used to show up with the generator out there, plug it in.
Yeah, that was.
Well, it depends on how long it was.
No.
You remember it, right?
That was before we had electricity.
No, you had power out there. They were plugging the generator in near the pole. I was there then. What we're asked is that if high tide's coming in at four o'clock in the morning, I want to be able to sleep through it. That's all. Simple. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Bruce. Okay, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? All right, seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn. Motion. Got excited.
Committee of Clark.
Yes.
Committee of Press. Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Mayor Perry's to adjourn.
All right, have a good night, everybody. Thank you all very much.